Couple more, so.
All right.
You're in for the long haul in this year 2020. All right, it's eight thirty. Should we get started? Pam, does it look like we have a quorum?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. I think we're good. Pam at the living room real quick, but I think she said we're good. So if you want to give it one more minute, we'd appreciate it.
Yep, we can do that.
Good to see Mr. LaMonaco was this morning.
Good morning, Gerald. And I heard your update on Joanne. Please give her my best and our prayers.
I sure will, yeah. As she'd been, she'd had it now, this probably about the third or fourth, fourth day. Like a truck hit her, she body aches. Too much coughing last night. But we'll, we'll see where we go today.
Right. Everybody getting their coffee and settling in. Mike, it's good to see you. I feel like I never get to see you.
Hi, Chairman, Chairwoman Bolter. Good to see you.
All right, well, let's get started. Welcome everyone to the November nineteenth Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Wayman will quickly read our electronic notification and then we'll get started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to State Statute fifteen point two six three A one A, the Kent County Board of Commissioners today will conduct this meeting, the electronic communications to protect the public health. Any member of the public wishing to listen to the proceedings or provide public comment may do so by using the internet connection and phone numbers and passcode below on the agenda posted. Close captioning is available via internet connection. Those wishing to provide input or ask questions in advance of the meeting regarding business to come before the committee may submit the input or questions to Anyone disrupting the meeting by using offensive language or actions will be removed, removed or muted from the meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Wayman. All right, we are calling this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Bonk. Commissioners Bonk. Andor. I'm sorry, Commissioner Bonk, did you? Commissioners Andor. Bonk is here. Commissioners Andor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Stack.
Here.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Sparks.
Press.
Melton.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Talon.
Here.
Olkowski.
Present.
Bullman.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Skans.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen members present and zero absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to invocation and now call Commissioner Andor.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully I won't start coughing through this. I do not have the virus, but my allergies are really bad, so bear with me here. You know, as we're getting into this phase of the virus where it seems like it's getting worse, not better. We're also getting so close to be able to get vaccinated. It's a really strange time right now. And I wanted to pray for those who are still suffering from this and pray for a speedy virus delivery system to combat it. So if we just bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, may we who are merely inconvenienced remember those whose lives are at stake. May we who have no risk factors remember those most vulnerable. May we who have the luxury of working from home remember those who must choose between preserving their health or making their rent. May we who have the flexibility to care for our children when the school is closed, remember those who have no options. May we who have to cancel our trips remember those they have no so, they have no safe place to go. May we who are losing our margin money in the tumult of economic market, of the economic market, remember those who have no margin at all. As fear grips our country, let us choose love. During this time when we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be the loving embrace of God to our neighbors. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Amen. Great prayer. Thank you, Commissioner Andor.
Amen.
All right, we are on to item four, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wicked stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty, just as we stand.
We are on to Special Order of Business, item five on the agenda, and we have the zoo here with us today. I will call on Peter D'Irenzio, and I know Michael Monaco is here as well. So welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also our chief financial officers here, Michael Dan. I'm not sure many of you have, have met him before. Okay. Can everyone see my screen? I'm still learning the whole Zoom thing. And if I apologize if I don't follow protocol because I can't see everyone's face when I'm, when I'm looking at the screen. How we're all adapting to doing things electronically. Okay, so, so thank you, everyone, for allowing the zoo to provide its annual state, state of the zoo. I know it's late and in the year, but that's kind of worked out fortuitously because we have most of the year behind us and I can provide a better update of where, where the zoo is. Today, I'm hoping to give a brief overview of the zoo, how COVID's affected the zoo, how, how we've opened and despite the pandemic and the unrest, we've have a lot to celebrate. And then I know I did ask questions every year about the mileage and about our fundraising, so just a quick overview on finances and then some Q and A. So as a reminder, the zoo's core values are conservation, education, community, and celebrate. And the reason why I share those, the zoo's really dramatically pivoted in the last few years and everything we do is litmus tested against those core values. And it's why we've become far more involved in the community, how we've expanded our education programs, and then of course, releasing animals back into the wild, right here in the state of Michigan through conservation. We're also the tenth oldest zoo in, in the country. But we're, we're also only a few years old as a, as a private entity, as a nonprofit. We enjoy a public-private partnership with the county. And basically what that means is we operate the county's assets and everything we build. All the future assets are the property of the county. And then, of course, we have a mileage, point two two mils, which provides for the, provides funding for the care of animals and our K through twelve field trips, which this year haven't happened, but. So a quick overview, some more on, on the zoo is our financial, our operational budget is one-third mileage, two-thirds revenue from operations. I'm intentionally excluding capital because everything we raise is for construction. So our operational budget is sixteen million, and then the amount we raise, I'm going to show you that towards the end of the presentation. Zoos are big economic drivers, and that's because more people go to zoos each year than the combined attendance of professional football, baseball, basketball, and hockey. And based on a twenty sixteen report, our direct economic impact was forty million dollars. So how has COVID nineteen affected the zoo? Just as many other businesses, you know, we're all struggling with the same thing with lost revenue. We've taken a four million dollar revenue impact. And that's because we were closed for ten weeks, but the larger impact is in order to drastically stop the spread of the COVID nineteen virus, we've had to create attendance caps and capacity caps, which was the right thing to do, but we turned away over two hundred thousand guests and, and their revenue due to those limits. We've also rebalanced the budget though, so on a positive note, just like every other business, we're finding ways to survive. And we're in good financial shape. We've done that by reducing our headcount, mostly leaving seasonal, by reducing seasonal staff, but we also left many full-time positions unfilled. And then probably most heartbreaking is the dramatic reduction of education and community outreach programs this year in order to rebalance our budget. So regarding opening, what did we do to open safely? Well, the biggest thing was provide opportunities for social distancing. We did that by limiting our attendance capacity. Basically, if we want to create a six-foot social distancing, we can handle about five thousand people at the park at one time. If we create a seventy-two foot bubble, we can handle twenty-six hundred people. And then we set our capacity at thirteen fifty. Now, you might be asking, why did we set our capacity so much lower than what the, the state had asked us to do? Well, that's because there are families and kids, and kids don't understand social distancing. They, they run ahead. And we wanted to provide plenty of space so that people could physically distance themselves. We also have become a recognized leader in sanitation. You know, we saw how many organizations were using bleach to sanitize. The downside of bleach is you have to spray and leave it there, depending on the concentration, anywhere between one minute and ten minutes, and that means a child could touch that surface and touch their face. So we're using a hydrogen peroxide system, which means no PPE is required. It can be touched immediately and kills the virus in seconds. It's a top, it, it looks fairly simple, but it's a complicated system because hydrogen peroxide is not shelf-stable. And in order to preserve its effectiveness, we're using this innovative product, which was actually developed right here in West Michigan called Rescue. And because of that, other zoos and aquariums in North America are following our lead. We, we also did a great deal of social distancing, communication, and marketing and hand wash stations, and you know, what we found in the beginning of the pandemic was you could put up signage, no one reads it. So we tried to get really creative and Mike's team did a great job creating some fun signage, and we saw this round of signage that went, oh, we deployed in early July was far more effective. We also do P A announcements and it was really a way to have fun with animals and, and get kids to read it. And you may be surprised to learn this, but kids follow the rules much better than parents. So this was a big hit. Despite the pandemic, we have a lot to celebrate. We have a brand new front entry that followed the designs of, the principles of universal design. We've really embraced the universal design over the last couple of years and because it's not just about ADA. Now, because of the front entry, the whole zoo is now eighty-eight grade. But it, it's also about gender-neutral restrooms, adult changing stations, lactation rooms, culture, city design for broad-spectrum disorders, providing quiet, a quiet room, first-time use of braille. And also, it's not just the front entry. The new playground that we opened late last year is universal design, as is the Meerkat Habitat. And then part of being a zoo for all is being able to provide access for all, and we're really proud of our jump program, which is twenty percent of our attendance. And what, basically what that means, anyone in the state of Michigan that has a bridge card can come to the zoo for free. And it's been overwhelmingly successful, and we've seen a big boost in fundraising because of that. This really connects with a lot of people in the community. And you can see some photos there of our new front entry. If, if any of you haven't been to the zoo this year, we are, we are closed right now. Our last weekend is this weekend. I'd love to give anyone interested a tour. We're also leaders in sustainability because after all, we're about wild animals and wild places. So what are we doing to protect wild places? There's many different standards out there, and we looked at Lead Platinum, but we felt Lead Platinum didn't go far enough. So we're going after Living Building Challenge. It's Michigan's first LVC Living Building Challenge Commercial Project in state. And that does involve geothermal, solar energy recovery units, but what we're really proud of on this project is our landfill diversion. We used to have the old membership building, restrooms, and we knocked that down, and we actually provided, we had to provide chain of custody of where all of the saints and restrooms went. We hired artisans to, to shake the rock into blocks so that we could build retaining walls, and then all leftover material was turned into additive for the new concrete. So with the exception of the asbestos that was in that building, zero went to a landfill. We're also the first zoo in the world to go for gold, or any sites initiative, and we're, we think we're going to achieve gold. This is the Meerkat Habitat. It's also the first two-point-oh sites initiative in the state across any industry, public, private. And sites is the, is the lead version, but for land staping and parks. We're also proud of our stormwater diversion project. We're diverting or impacting thirty-seven million gallons of stormwater a year. That pond out front isn't natural. We actually used to pump a million gallons of city water in there a year, and now this is a big cost savings because we don't have to pump anything into it. Here's some images of, of some of our projects. Top left is the Meerkat Habitat. Bottom left is the new front entry. Like to point out that new front entry, that admissions building is made up of three shipping containers. We have a, a rich culture of manufacturing in West Michigan. Those containers used to cross the Pacific, and now they're being reused in, in our front entry. Of course, we did a lot in the area of conservation, saving animals from extinction, including releasing animals in the wild. But all of our fun, all of our funding for conservation comes from operations and, and well, fundraising, like our joint partnership brew of Avant with a be, a new beer, which is amazing. We use those proceeds to fund our, our conservation programs. We've also had a lot of animal births. And of course, you know, I, I gotta have some photos. I'm not sure if the armadillos are cuter than the red pandas, but those three baby red pandas are important, and of course, I can't leave the beer out, which is top center. And you know, I, I've been in West Michigan for almost five years, and one of the really neat things about West Michigan is our connection to the cultural arts. To art, yeah, while you don't need art to live, art makes life worth living. And I'm really proud of what we've done this year. The Aluma Zoo is the ninth time event that is really artistically inspired. We did the Brick Live, which are full-size animals made out of Lego bricks. You can see that in the bottom left. And we, we've also made a commitment to commission public art. On the right side, you can find these at our Meerkat Habitat. Those are cold cast bronze made by, we commissioned Mick Carlson, who does a lot, who's competed in Art Prize, does a lot of work around the city. He's a West Side native, and he did amazing work creating these Meerkat sculptures. So every, every new major exhibit is going to have a piece of public art. Okay, I apologize. I'm going fast, but I know I only have fifteen minutes, ten minutes, and then five minutes for Q and A. I did ask a lot of questions about our fundraising, and as you can see, it, it's really exploded in, in twenty eighteen. And what I'm most proud about our capital fundraising is about sixty percent of it is people that have never given to the zoo, including seven-figure gifts from the Lakeshore. So our fundraising has been very successful, and frankly, we're just getting started. And throughout COVID nineteen, we have received support, financial support. Fortunately, we're eligible for the Payroll Protection Program, and we received one point two five million to help offset that four million. And we also received from the county, thank you, by the way, chair's funds of two hundred thousand, and that helped covered direct costs due to P P E for guests and employees, because we, we handed out face masks early in the pandemic and the additional disinfection, et cetera. And then, of course, we, we're fortunate enough to, to have the Kent County Millage. It's point four four mils split between the museum and zoo. The zoo gets point two mils. In twenty twenty, that was five point three million. And we use those funds for K through twelve field trips, which really isn't a whole lot of cost, so most of it is animal care and the facilities and grounds. Unfortunately, it doesn't cover maintaining the, the county's current assets. But I gotta say, it's, it's a huge, huge help, particularly with the, with the pandemic. Also, I'm very pleased to announce, because everything we get built is fundraised, and those assets are transferred to the county. And as you can see, that number just keeps growing. Twenty twenty is projected to be over ten million dollars alone. That's a net twelve million since twenty seventeen. And I, I know the county, and rightfully so, is very proud of their triple-A bond rating, and roughly a triple-A bond rating allows you to leverage twenty percent of your assets. So that gives the county the ability to borrow up to two point four million dollars and still maintain their triple-A bond rating, so. Yeah, we're really proud to be able to, to give back and, and as a way of saying thank you for the mileage and being able to give back to the community. Okay, I went through that really quick, but I was trying to stay at ten minutes out of respect for time.
You did a great job. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you. All right, let's pull up the chat and see what questions. Anyone have their hands raised? Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I have, I actually have a question and a statement, so my, my statement first will be the only, the Lumazoo, anyone and everyone that I spoke with who was able to go and see it, they just said, wow, is that something you are going to do again?
That is something we're hoping to do again, and you know, a lot of what I talked to my team about is about staying IJAL, and all of us have had to be really creative during this pandemic, and from ideation to implementation, we, we pulled that off in three weeks. So we have many months to prepare for next year's Alumazoo, and we expect it to be larger and far more impactful. And we're hoping, we're, we're in active negotiations with Blue Water, but we're hoping to be able to do that longer, starting in early September, late August, and running through the beginning of November.
Nice, good, because unfortunately, we planned to go the last weekend, and that was the weekend that we had rain, snow, and wind all in the same, same amount of time, and I, I like the zoo, but not that well. So my sec, my, my true question, though, is what, since you did not have the schools this year, much in the spring or the fall, do you have a way of carrying over that funding, if you will, so that maybe next year you could impact more schools, or is that not something that can happen?
Yeah, unfortunately, with the four million dollar shortfall, we've made some decisions on areas to cut, but I will say we are working with the school districts, and we have an innovative solution. I, I and I'm not sure how many schools are going to take advantage of it. But normally, they have to come as a, a, a field trip as a class. And because schools are online and, and summer, some, well, not now, but some of them were in person, some of them weren't. If the, we've reached out to the schools and the teachers actually set a time when this is going to be our zoo field trip, then we, we give them two weeks to come as families to the zoo on their own. So that way, they can social distance, and it allows the teacher to incorporate it into the curriculum. And they have two weeks in order to come, that class to come out to the zoo for free.
Nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I am pleased to be among one of the two commissioners who do serve, serve on the zoo board, and I'm, I'm pleased to be involved with the zoo. Harold Voorhees is the other commissioner who serves with me, and I think it's a pleasure for him as well, but one of the things you've talked about is the conservation, and we can serve for the animal community and our natural community. And you'd also talked about sustainability, but I think you were a little modest in talking about the awards that all of your efforts are, you know, are achieving, that you're getting awards for what you are doing. And I would like you to talk about that just a little bit, particularly the one I'm aware of right now is from the West Michigan Sustainability Business Forum, for all we're doing to conserve stormwater.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we see some, some recognition actually globally and nationally for a lot of the projects we're doing, and I guess it's not atypical of West Michigan to be able to compete at the national stale, so I'm very proud of the team. With the West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum, we got the Clean Water Award, and then we also got the Sustainable Business of the Year Award. We've also been fortunate enough in the last twelve months or so to, to receive the Epic Award, to receive Best and Brightest Award. We, we've, we have a solid professional staff and our Director of Sustainability, last year, he served on a National Board, Sustainability Board. He, now, I'm sorry, he didn't serve. He was the president of the National Sustainability Board. So we do a lot of work locally and nationally and internationally. Our conservation projects, you know, we think the best place for animals is in the wild, and we, so where we operate is where wildlife and community intersects. So how do we educate people about the need to conserve wildlife? And people don't wake up wanting to, to make an animal extinct. They're just trying to provide for their family. So because of that, our conservation efforts, which are, which are all fundraised or from revenue from operations, we do things like builds, help build schools, did wells in third-world countries, provide clean burning stoves in Nepal. The leading death of women and children in Nepal is, is indoor air pollution from burning wood in, in their yurts. Those clean burning stoves save lives, but they also reduce the amount of wood that is needed by tenfold, which protects red panda habitats. And then we do things locally too. It's, it's why more than half of our conservation efforts are in the Great Lakes region. Is how we're going to get people to care about the environment if they're not focused on what's happening in their own backyard. So I, I could go on and on about that. But my passion is sustainability and the work we're doing environmentally with geothermal wells and photovoltaics and marching towards net carbon zero. It's, we're, we're trying to show the community there's a cost-effective way to do this, and and many, many of these initiatives, we're actually saving money, and we found, we've hosted some biofillet design classes for architects and other community leaders. And there are ways to do this that don't actually add cost.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy, did that answer? Did you get your questions in?
Yes, that was very nice. I'm on the Facilities Committee for the, for the board, and we have a lot of exciting exhibits that will be coming on board in the next couple of years too, so stay tuned. It's a very dynamic organization.
Great. Commissioner Breevy had her hand up, and then I think she put it down, so we'll go on to Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for coming today and presenting on, on the zoo. I am very impressed with the sustainability efforts that you've been putting in and the work that you've done on energy waste production and the desire to keep moving on it. My question is, is has there been consideration to utilize what's called tax-exempt lease purchase agreements for sustainability efforts? I know four years ago, this became an available tool to government and quasi-governmental entities like the zoo to finance more aggressive energy waste reduction, sustainability efforts, renewables, without having to either tap equity or cash, which we, or debt, which are both limited availabilities by structuring them as, as lease purchase agreements, and in a way can allow entities to save money quite quickly. I know that there are a number of school districts that are starting to I know that there are a number of school districts that are starting to use this. Is this something that the zoo has considered in their kind of next steps in pursuing net carbon or zero net carbon emission and pursuing a more aggressive sustainability goal?
Yes, absolutely. And we're going for net carbon zero, which is more stringent than net carbon zero emissions. Part of the living building challenge is, so for example, the meerkat habitat and all new construction has to be zero CO2. So we can't use natural gas to heat a building or to cook with, et cetera. But going even farther is net carbon zero. And I say net carbon zero because I think we need opportunity to, we also do reforestation projects. And by restoring habitat, that creates carbon credits, if you will. And we haven't begun to measure those yet. But to get to your answer, we are exploring it. Matter of fact, I had a meeting last week about it. And I have another meeting in two weeks about it. And we know to get completely off the grid, we need about 4.6 acres of photovoltaics. Part of the challenge is where do you put it and how do you fund it? And being a nonprofit, that adds some complexity on some of those tax credits. But I don't want to get ahead of myself until we get farther in negotiations. But I think we can work out a lease agreement with a for-profit company that can take advantage of those credits. And then we take advantage of the energy savings without having to spend any, or to reduce our expenditure and not have to spend any capital.
Perfect.
Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Peter, for the presentation this morning. And one thing that you mentioned, I wasn't sure if I was clear on, you mentioned gender-neutral restrooms. Am I assuming those are just restrooms for one person at a time?
That's correct. So the new front entry has a men's, women's room. And then around the corner are a couple gender-neutral restrooms. So it's one person, door locks behind you. And so anyone can use it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Peter, not really a question. I just want to thank you for your efforts for the five years that you've been here. You know, zoos were always just criticized as places where animals were in cages. And what you have done with the zoo under your leadership and your staff to make the zoo far more than that and a bigger footprint in the world. I applaud you for all your efforts. And the results show in your fundraising and the amount of people that come through those. And I know at one time a year ago, I think we had a visitor from every state, and that says a lot, too. So I appreciate your efforts, but especially appreciate the efforts of your whole staff. Every time I've been there, the staff has been courteous, professional. Any question you'd have, they'd be more than happy to talk to you. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. I'm pretty sure we didn't have attendance from all 50 states this year. But we did get attendance from Indiana and the UP.
I don't see any other hands up. I have one little question, and I don't expect to get it today. You guys can email it out. But just wondering if we track, you know, when I was out hitting doors earlier this year, hear a lot about millages. And it's really helpful for us to have some data that backs up the usage and what we're seeing. And I'm wondering if we do any type of capture on data of how many Kent County kids are attending the zoo for free under that. So if you could get us some of those statistics just later, just email to us, that would be amazing. Because it just kind of helps us show the value of those dedicated millages and what they bring to the community and what people are giving for that. So any and all information you can send to us would be great. We really appreciate that.
We absolutely have that. And I may also send a few years' worth, just because this year of the pandemic.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, and I know we're the 10th oldest, but we think we're the best zoo in the nation. So thank you so much for coming, and we really appreciate all your efforts and your staff. And it's just amazing to see the transformation, especially under your leadership. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we are going to move on to Item Six, Public Comment Related to Agenda Items on the agenda today. Do we have any public comment today? We also have a public comment email that we will check as well.
Yes, please.
Is that Nancy?
Yes, it is.
Hello, welcome to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Go for it, yep.
Thank you very much, Chair Bolter. I'm Nancy Nielsen. I live at 14130 Keller Cedar Springs, also Spencer Township. I am Chair of the Senior Village Review Committee. Probably is a no-brainer that I am here this morning to thank you in advance, to thank you for your approval of the resolution on your ballot, your agenda this morning to approve the senior millage allocations for 2021. The year of the pandemic has been like none other. Of course, most of the programs that the senior millage funds are programs that are in-home programs or in groups, all of which were at risk this year and took a huge impact. I have to commend our partner agencies. They really stepped up for some creative kind of thinking of their programs. They helped each other very creatively and collaboratively to get the services out there. The pandemic, of course, also impacted our October meetings when our committee meets to do the core of our work to prepare for today, bringing the recommendations to you. We meet with all 33 of our providers to discuss their past performance and their proposals. And I have to say that at those meetings, which really are the equivalent of a full week of work, we had 110% attendance and participation, illustrating again just how seriously we approach our responsibility to our fellow taxpayers. $12 million does not chump change, and we certainly appreciate that fact. Of the nine members of the committee, five, like myself, are retired. But the other four are county folks. And I want to just highlight to you, hold up to you, Commissioners Hennessy, Stack, and Coleman, who were very much a part of our process for that entire week, as well as Sandra Ghost and Jones from your staff. They all have full-time day jobs. And last but not least, I would certainly like to bid Godspeed to Harold Voorhees. Harold was a cherished member of our committee for six years, always approaching our work thoughtfully and articulately, as you know, and always an advocate for seniors and senior village. Among all the things you've done in the community, Harold, the village was just a part of it. So we applaud all your public service, and thank you so very much. And wish you a happy retirement, and you will certainly be missed. And I guess last, I just want to mention that there are area staff that are online here, too, from the Area Agency on Aging. So when you get ready to discuss that item on your agenda, we have lots of folks here to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you for all of your work and taking the time to come see us today. We don't get a ton of visitors. So we love when we hear from people in our community. And we are so appreciative that you joined us today. So thank you so much. Any other public comment today related to an agenda item? I'm told there's nothing in the email inbox, and I don't see any other hands. Okay, we're going to move on to seven on our agenda, Item Seven, Consent Agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Support by Breevy.
Moved by Commissioner Antor, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this issue? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes.
Sparks. Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Wolkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you so much. We are on to eight, Item Eight of our agenda, Resolutions. And I will call on Commissioner Breevy for a motion for Resolution 8A.
Thanks, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 121 up to date's date, the 2021 General Appropriation Act from the Administrator's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner.
Wooden.
Wooden.
Wooden. Questions or comments on Resolution 121? Don't see any hands raised. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Wooden.
Just very briefly, because I inadvertently, I think, beat her to the punch in offering support and just thanking the entire committee, and especially our committee chair, Diane Jones, for this, for working through our budget. And this was certainly an interesting year, but I think our budget process went pretty smoothly this time around. Probably because all the excitement was deciding on how to expend the CARES Act funds. But regardless, this was very smooth. Questions were answered. And just thankful again for the way that this has been organized under her leadership. And I'll be voting for it, one of the reasons. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 121, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman. Breevy.
Yes.
Heel. Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Wolkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 121 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Agenda Item 8B, and I'll call Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 122 forward of today's date, Coronavirus Relief Fund Interest Appropriation from the Administrator's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner.
Support by Breevy.
Breevy, questions or comments on Resolution 122? Don't see any hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 122, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Wolkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 122 is adopted.
Great. We are on to Agenda Item 8C, the Senior Millage. I'll call again on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move forward the senior millage allocations for 2021 from the Administrator's Office for today's date.
Voorhees.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Voorhees. Questions or comments on Resolution 123? No hands. Commissioner, looks like Commissioners Stack.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. Just want to acknowledge having sat on the allocation committee this year again, to acknowledge the support and work of AAA and assisting us in that process. Certainly thanking Nancy for her continued leadership. My colleagues, Commissioners Hennessy and Coleman, for their consistent work through that process. Those of you that sat on this know that this is not the easiest committee to sit on. It requires a substantial amount of work and probably your whole week in early October. And then some. Also want to acknowledge the entire team for continuing to be forward-thinking and innovative in this process. I know we've been doing this for a fair number of years. But again, this year, there was an effort to take another look at what are we doing right? What do we need to fix? What do we need to adjust going forward? Challenging year to do that, but it continues to be a process that is evaluative and looking at how we can best improve the process. So I'm proud of the work that we've done in there, and certainly will support it.
Thank you, Stan.
Move Commissioner Wolkowski.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just real quick, as I explained at Finance, I have an ongoing conflict through my position at Disability Advocates as a recipient of these funds, some of these funds, if approved. And so I will be abstaining.
Great. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. To follow up on what Commissioner Stack said, we really did, before COVID hit, we began to strategically take a look at what we were doing and how we were doing it. And of course, the area agency and all of our agencies have remained very, very dynamic in how they're going to approach their jobs, how they're going to keep in touch with people, whether it be in person or bringing it to them. Food is a priority, and our food programs have expanded tremendously. Many times, you know, instead of the bus taking people to food sites or to lunch program, the food is being brought to people by those buses. I mean, we have just, you know, it has adapted so that people are served. And I would encourage families, individuals to contact the area agency if they have a need of services. See what we can do. The intent remains to keep people in their homes for as long as possible and to reduce the loneliness that people might feel in their homes as well. There's a lot of personal contact that's made. So I would encourage contact with the area agency. It does good work.
Great. I don't see any other hands.
Mask, Madam Chair.
Sure. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you. In my experience with the senior millages, I have stated before, this is the way government should work. There's people who will take that time, go through all of the options and opportunities that are there to make sure that we get the top impact on our senior millage. I thank Jackie O'Connor for her years of work. And thank you, Nancy, for your kind words and know that that team that oversees that. And now with the commissioners that have served in this year, thank you. Because in years, we are a big part of our community. And we're thankful for the work of the area agency and our senior millage. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees, it looks like Commissioner Stack has his hand raised again.
Yes, just a quick disclosure. I serve on the governing board of KCCA, which is a recipient of some of these funds. I'm understanding that that is not a conflict for me to go ahead and vote on this overall allocation.
Great. All right, seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 123, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Wolkowski.
Abstain.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eighteen yeas, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution one two-three is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, I want to acknowledge all the staff at Senior Milage and everything they've done to establish this process. As you know, other milage review committees have modeled after them, so thank you so much. And Nancy, please take all of our well wishes back to everyone. We really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you so much. We are on to item D eight D of our agenda, and I will again call Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution one twenty-four of today's date, the twenty twenty amended apportionment report from the Bureau of Equalization.
Moved by Commissioner Breeby, support by Commissioner. Ponstein. Questions or comments on resolution one twenty-four? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, just wanted to say, you know, this is really where the rubber hits the road for the county, and this is where it all happens, where we are able to, you know, receive the funding for our entire budget and everything. I know it's a huge job, and I just wanted to once again thank Matt and all the people that work in his office. We don't talk about them a whole lot, and that's usually a good sign that they're doing a really good job, so I just want to thank them.
Okay, any other hands raised? I don't see any. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution one two-four, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Wolcoski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one two-four is adopted.
Great. We are on to item eight E, and I will call on Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move for adoption of resolution one twenty-five, which is the Management Pay Plan Compensation Program for twenty twenty-one.
Moved by Commissioner Talon, support by Commissioner.
Voorhees.
Voorhees. Questions or comments on resolution one twenty-five? Don't see any hands. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution one twenty-five, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Wolcoski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one two-five is adopted.
Great, we are on to agenda item eight F, and I will again call on Commissioner Talon.
Thank you again, Chair Bolter. I move the adoption of resolution one twenty-six, which is an amendment to our contract with Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers Local two fourteen.
Moved by Commissioner Talon, support by Commissioner.
Hennessy.
Hennessy. Questions or comments on resolution one twenty-six? Don't see any hands raised. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution one two-six, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Wolcoski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one two-six is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution of the day, item eight G, and I will call on Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I noticed you saved the best for last for the motion. Thank you. I move resolution one twenty-seven of today's date, the addition of one full-time corrections officer positions to the Sheriff's Department.
Moved by Commissioner Melton, support by Commissioner.
That Voorhees.
That. Questions or comments on resolution one twenty-seven? No hands? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution one two-seven, Commissioners Bonk.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Wolcoski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one two-seven is adopted.
Sorry. Wrong to ball a sudden. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we do have a COVID subcommittee scheduled for nine thirty, most likely not be making that, so I'm just making that announcement to anyone who might be on this Zoom, and to let Pam know, please let our attendees of that know we will be late. We are on to item nine, public comment related to general county matters. Have any public comment? Natasha, if you could check the email box. Don't see any hands raised. Nothing in email. All right, we are going to go on to.
I would like to make a public comment.
Oh, sure. Can I ask, can you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Elsha Skipper. I live on Inishanabe land, also known as Grand Rapids, in District sixteen. I'm calling to request that the county enact a state of emergency to spread, to curb the spread of COVID nineteen. The slogan of stay home to save lives unaccompanied by tangible, accessible, universal aid does nothing other than blame the rising COVID numbers on individuals rather than the elected officials whose salaries we pay to improve our quality of life and keep us safe. If stopping the spread means everyone stays home, our government needs to make that actually possible by providing rent and mortgage relief, extended unemployment, and stimulus for all. We don't need more PSAs and gaslighting slogans or funds that require filling out grant requests and spending hours and levels of bureaucratic phone calls. The working people of Grand Rapids and Kent County need direct help now. The Grand Rapids City Commissioners just rejected five hundred thousand dollars of COVID relief funds for police technology, thanks in large part to a huge negative reaction from citizens and a call that those funds be used to directly help us in Grand Rapids, especially those in our most vulnerable neighborhoods. I'm asking that the Kent County Board of Commissioners enact a state of emergency, immediately expand testing available to citizens, provide direct relief to us, and also create emergency warming centers throughout the city, especially downtown, where Mel Trotter expects this winter to be as much as thirty percent over capacity to help save the lives of people experiencing homelessness this winter. If our local government can call in the National Guard at the drop of a hat to protect businesses in this city and in this county, surely they can also act quickly to save lives during a global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you so much for comments. Any other public comment today? I don't see any hands raised. And nothing in email. All right, we are now on to Commissioner Reports. Do I have any official Commissioner Report today? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to touch base. The Kent County Parks Foundation did meet recently and wanted to let everyone know there would be no spring event, but we will have a plan for Something's Grilling in September between the fourteenth and the sixteenth, and there's also going to be a December newsletter, and in that December newsletter, you will also have an ask. I'd like to ask each Commissioner to give that some thought. We all have experienced the importance of our parks with the challenges with COVID, with that being an opportunity for us to get out and take care of our mental health and how important that is. So additional support from each of us is certainly appreciated. I know I will be donating. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I serve on the Grand Public Museum Board, and I also serve on the Audit Committee for the museum. And yesterday, we had a joint meeting with the Finance Committee for the museum, and just wanted to let everybody know that we have the results from our audit. It was a very squeaky clean audit, and one of the things that was mentioned too was the museum and how grateful they are for the milage. That's something that, you know, they've really been able to do a lot of work with that, and especially during the times where attendance is down, and so they just expressed their gratitude for the milage and the county and the citizens that have approved that.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So many of you have heard years of reports from me regarding what's going on at Network One Eighty about financial woes, but after a significant amount of work and the efforts of our new CEO, Bill Ward, and certainly all the staff, we are in quite a different place at Network One Eighty. And as a consequence, we went through a board meeting this past week where we set out a very challenging spectrum of new projects focused on how we can improve, enhance, and and expand services through a number of projects and programs. So it's an exciting place and time to be at Network One Eighty, and at least not talking about financial disaster every week. So look forward to a lot of positive reporting going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Commissioner Wolcoski.
Thank you, Chair. The Friend of the Court Advisory Committee met at the beginning of the month and continues to focus on the work of the Friend of the Court. Always invite you all to check out stuff on the Friend of the Court website. The information is there, and they continue to do good work, well received by folks, making things more understandable as people unfortunately have to deal with Friend of the Court in their lives. On a sad note, Bishop Walter Durham, who spent many years on that advisory committee and many years as Chair, he passed on Monday evening. So just condolences to him and his family, and thanks for his service to the county in years past.
Thank you for sharing that, Dave. Don't see any other hands raised for reports, so we will move on to item eleven miscellaneous. Any Commissioner miscellaneous today? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Well, the good news is, it seems like we're just possibly a couple weeks, two or three weeks out from the first round of vaccinations potentially hitting the market, and I just, I'm hoping and I'm confident that our health department's going to be extremely involved in lining us, you know, Kent County up for those vaccinations. I know some jurisdictions across the country don't seem to want them for some reason, and I think if we could get them here, then at least have them on hand, so people that choose to be vaccinated will have that option. I hope we work as a county to try to fast-track them to Kent County in whatever ways we can. So that's it. I just got my fingers crossed that hopefully within, at least within a month, we'll have some vaccinations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'll be really brief. Listening on the Executive Committee meeting this morning and the talk about whether morning or evening meetings draw more people, just want to acknowledge, I know on my counter, we had almost seventy people at one time on this Zoom meeting, so as we look at different ways to communicate with the people, I think this is a very effective way that has come about because of the COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, and I know that during our miscellaneous as Commissioners, we can speak sometime long as we want, but please time me and stop me at three minutes. Please stop me. Um, I don't know whether to laugh or cry when I hear the public so ill-informed on what the Kent County Commission has done during this pandemic. From hotel vouchers for the homeless to giving a half million to nonprofits in the last three weeks, even though that's just now starting to go out for stopping the violence, and to hear nobody who has, well, I heard a few people who are on the commission who have a voice to talk to the city of Grand Rapids, let people know we have funded programs, these social programs to help stop violence. So much money was put out on testing and tracing. If people really want to know what was done, our subcommittee videos are out there. Maybe you should watch all of those to see the millions of dollars that have went out to Salvation Army. Millions of dollars that have went out to help this community during the coronavirus, and most of it came to the vulnerable communities. I was just re-elected by historical numbers and the highest percentage of all Commissioners in my most vulnerable community, and a lot of that is because of the help that Kent County has done, and me being smart enough to go to my community and say, hey, these are the resources available. I'm on the committee. This is where you go, and they, I get people coming up giving me accolades. Yesterday, I went to the grocery store. People were thanking me. This is no lie. I could not get out of the parking lot for over four hours from people coming thanking me for the things this commission has done, and I got a lot of the credit, but I always let them know it's not me. It's a group of Republicans, Democrats, it's a group of blacks, whites. It's a diverse group of people of all shades and colors and backgrounds who did this, but they continue to give me the accolades. We need help getting that message out there. So anybody in the public that is listening, and before you want to say that the county hasn't done anything, my name is Commissioner Robert S. Womack from the four nine five oh seven. Give me a call at six one six two nine five eight nine five three, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. African Americans, we have some violence going on. We lost thirty-four people. A lot of people who say defund the police, understand that there's, we need reform. I understand the national things that are happening, but I pray, and I pray to God that you're never one of the mothers that I have to talk to daily who has had a son shot in the face in front of fifty people who will not testify, in front of people who did not call the ambulance or the police. My community has told me to help save these young people's lives by any means necessary, and that's why you didn't see a hundred or fifty black people come down and say, defund the police or we don't want them in our community. I thank people for trying to help the black community, but you are not black. You cannot speak for us, and you need to speak to us before you go to be our lawyers and our representatives. I know this is a harsh stand, but my people are dying, and this commission sent a million dollars to the city of Grand Rapids to help. If the community doesn't want shot spotters, there's other conversation, but I've seen the city commission send that money back to Grandstand. It wasn't all the Commissioners, but it garnered up enough votes to them. But I've seen the city commission send that money back to Grandstand. It wasn't all the commissioners, but it would garnered up enough votes to embarrass the first black police chief. And our community is highly upset that he is being defunded. We've been going through racism, police brutality for hundreds of years. As bad as things are, we know things are getting better. We still want reform. We still want more justice. But to see the first black police chief defunded and you think we're sitting here clapping our hands as hard as we fought to see the first black police chief in our lifetime and 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 yeah, I just want to say that money, everybody was given money. We achieved all of our goals. And that money compared to what we gave away, that was so small. And city commissioners who work with budgets every day know that to the average person, that was a lot of money going to the police department. That was something to show the police department and the community were going to support them because it takes all of us to stop crying and we can't eliminate the police. I'm going to stop now because I could go on all day. I'm very sorry for being lengthy lengthy in this. Um, I know how unpopular it is now, but I've been marching against the police for over two decades. I'm seeing all these new people that wasn't there when Thames Hawkins was killed or Watkins. I'm seeing people who didn't march when our kids were being handcuffed. I don't know where all these people came from. And we were always marching to reform and change the police and we seen GRPD come so far. And now here we are, defunding the first black police chief. I want to apologize to Chief Eric Payne for the commissioners that are working to defund him and thank him for his service. I thank the entire community for your comments. I'm not against anyone. I'm just saying, before you speak with black people, to black people, after I've been represented by eighty-four percent of the vote coming out to put me back in office, that you haven't talked to me or my community. I'm sorry, it is what it is. Some of you, some of these people need to shut up. You can meet us on Franklin and Eastern or you could meet us at Miss Tracy's when Romito Jones was shot and killed. You can meet us out there in access where we want to help save our lives. We're at war in our community. Thirty-four dead. Every weekend, someone shot. You go test your experiment with no police in Holly or Hollywood or East Grand Rapids. Then you come try it on the four nine oh seven. We are not your experiment. We are not about to go through this experiment so you could count how many people died and see if it worked. I'm done. Thank you for not telling me to shut up, Chair. I know I've overgrown my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. We're beyond appreciative of of all your service. So thank you. Looks like we have Commissioner Jones and then Commissioners Stuck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter, and thank you, Commissioner Womack, for your comments. And as far as I'm concerned, you take as much time as you need. I thought everything that you said was important and spot on. So thank you. I wanted to circle back because we just went through our budget, which is really, really significant. It is a blueprint for how we operate and manage going into 2021. It is online. It is worth a lot of kudos and thank yous to staff, to Chair Bolter, to Vice Chair, Commissioner Breavy and the entire finance committee, the entire board. And it is also worth noting that it is Jeff Dodds Fiscal Services Director First Budget. And we go through this, it looks incredibly smooth, but not without a lot of effort, months and months of effort and hours and hours of time. You know, we just passed a $496 million budget with a general fund of $192, $192 million. And it is a well thought out, fiscally balanced budget. And I really like to thank all the hours of everyone putting in that, all of our staff. It is not something that's easily done every year and it is certainly a team effort to make this happen. Wayman, thank you for your efforts in putting this together and helping to lead it as well because as we know, it is your budget that we go through, review, discuss. And I really also would like everyone, if you haven't, to make sure you read that letter that Wayman writes on the front end of the budget. It's a great summary and has a lot of additional points in there. So again, thank you to everyone and I will let you go on to the next one. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Stuck.
Well, actually, I took my hand down so as to not detract from Commissioner Womack's comments, so I'll pass.
Any other comments? We are at nine forty-six. We do have an additional subcommittee meeting after this. I would like to to move on unless there are any other hands raised. Seeing none, I will call on Commissioner Antor for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move to adjourn subject, call of the chair to Thursday, December third, two thousand twenty at eight thirty for official meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Antor, support by Commissioner.
Melton.
Melton, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.